Good afternoon. This is the, this is Wednesday, November 20th, and this is the Athens City Planning Commission meeting, and it's 12:01, so we'll get started. Looking to my left and right, we do have a quorum here. The next order of business is for anyone who is going to speak from the audience if they would raise their right hand and, and basically say you do based on what I'm going to ask, and that is that all that you have to say is the truth to the best of your knowledge. The next item is the disposition of minutes from the November 6th meeting. Has everyone had a chance here on the commission to look at those? Is there, are there any questions or concerns about anything in those minutes? Are there any inaccuracies or anything of that nature? If there is not, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes. There's a, the mayor has moved.
Second.
And Chris has, has seconded that. So are there, are all those in favor, would they please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's a unanimous vote, there's no maze. The, the next, next order of business is case number 24-07, which is a zoning request for Zero Pomeroy Road by Spire Development. Mr. Riggs, do you have anything that you'd like to comment upon before?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so this is part of our zoning code regulations, and the zoning amendments to the zoning map can be made by adoption by the commission, by adoption by city council, or by filing out an application by at least one of the property owners, and that's what we're doing today. So we'll have a request to make a zoning change to the map, and then that would be a motion by this board to either approve or deny it, and it'll go to city council from here.
Representative from Spire, do you have anything you'd like to add before we started on discussion here with the commission?
Good afternoon. Sean McMichael with Spire Development. Nothing that wasn't discussed two weeks ago. Thank you again for your time at the previous meeting. I just want to add that, you know, we, we do feel that this is an ideal site for R3 zoning. It meets a goal of the comprehensive plan, and it is adjacent to existing multifamily. We gave the particular site selection a lot of thought in regards to its proximity to public transportation, walkability of the area. We are committed to adding sidewalks as a part of the project, and we think that it, you know, the, the site in particular is a good fit for what we are proposing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments anybody on the commission would like to make? Mr. Stone?
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. And this can either be for, for David or for the representative from Spire. Is the request for moving from an R1 to an R3 for the entire 28.592 acres, or just for a portion of it?
It is just for a portion.
And secondly, is that portion already subdivided with a separate tax ID, or are we asking for a dividing of a parcel into two different zones?
It's currently subdivided.
Okay, so which, which parcel specifically are, you know, I'm just looking at the maps in our packet.
Here, this again.
Make sure I understand. That's the overall one, yeah.
This is what, this is what Megan, or us. So this is what Megan had sent to us.
Right.
So it's just this.
This one here, does it stay R1?
That's what, and I, that's one of the questions I have, as to whether that ought to be considered as a part of the R3 as well, and the, the small triangle on the other side as well.
Yeah.
And I, I guess that would be three different parcels, I'm not sure.
Oh. Yeah. You know, I think the, the portion that's right across from Coventry, do you own that? Is that, or is that part of the purchase contract? The portion that's right across from Coventry intersection?
Yes, the, yeah.
And that's not part of the request, and that would stay R1?
Correct.
See, I think one of the things I feel is that, I think the R3 makes sense, in part, as Megan had pointed out two weeks ago, because it's adjacent to, what is it, B3?
Yeah.
And so that, there was some logic into that, but then I would say then, if that's the logic, I'd carry it forward to that one piece anyway, and, and possibly the other one too. Yeah. That border of the street.
That's just a little bitty parcel, that little triangle that's left?
Yeah.
I don't know if that makes sense. David, are you?
I'm looking it up right now, sir.
All right, thank you. Would you be opposed to, you know, making that portion across, that little triangle directly across from Coventry, R3 as well? Or do you want to keep that R1 for some reason?
We're not opposed to any of the parcels being rezoned to R3.
Okay.
So by the application, he's asking to change parcel A029200002801 to, as vacant land from R1 to R3. That parcel by the Athens County Auditor is 8.273 acres.
That's more than this. David, do you have the document that, that came from Ms. Jennings?
I don't have it with me, no. Yeah, so it's just this piece, but this is the, this is, may I come up?
Sure, please do. So this is the piece that they're, that they're talking about zoning, but the parcel that they're asking for on the, on the, on the application is what you can see here.
It is the entire?
It is the entire parcel, so that was on the, that's what's on the application.
That's all hillside.
I apologize if I misunderstood your question. We are proposing that entire parcel. The, the, there's two site plans that were provided as our conceptual package. One is the entire parcel, and it's blown out. There's a smaller section, which I think may be what Megan is showing, and that's just so that you can more easily see.
I see, so this black line is where the development is, and this dash green line, that's what the zoning change request is?
Well, no, I, I put that dash green line on there.
Oh, did you?
Yes, so that's.
Ah, I see.
I, I have a question about, and I, I do remember you're saying that you're only developing this one portion of it, the eight point something acres, but knowing that there are, there is larger acreage, I guess, and with no plans, I hear you saying, to, to develop it right now. My question is, is can we attach a condition to it by saying a strong suggestion from the part of the planning commission, that only this eight acres and not something else later on? I think the protection of some of that area from development might be, from further development out there in the future, might be, oh, how do I want to say? Not of interest, but it might be reassuring to some of the other private, the R1s that are adjacent to it.
I mean, I mean, my counter to that would be, you know, the more restrictions we put on land, the, the less houses get built in Athens. Now, I feel like the restriction on that back portion is, is by physics, because the, the topography makes it so hard to develop that, that it's, you know, it would be very prohibitively expensive to do, but, you know, I think we have other areas in the city that are zoned for, you know, business use or for residential use, but, but the, the terrain just makes it cost prohibitive, and that in and of itself. I understand what you're saying, though, because you could have folks on the adjacent R1s, that when this goes before city council, say, hey, I don't want an R3 behind me, and if you put a, a limit on it in some form or function, but I, I don't know what this body can, I mean, this is zoning, so short of subdividing, because I think we've tried to make our policy not to, not to zone across a, a parcel boundary.
Okay.
So if, if we want, because it's hard when somebody comes to apply, we have places in the city where zoning, you know, it's, one, one parcel has two different zones, and, you know, someone comes to apply and they say, well, you know, I'm building on the front of the, it's because, you know, we, we drew the line as a, as just kind of a carte blanche, you know, here's the line, and we don't know exactly where on the parcel it is, as opposed to making it follow the parcel boundary. And so we try to, you know, make zones tie to parcel boundaries whenever we can. Short of subdividing and making that other one a different zone, I don't know that we have a mechanism that, do you know?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I could comment on that. There are additional regulations in the, in our code that restricts hillside development, and these are slip-prone soils in the back portion of this, so we have a lot of regulations already in place, already on the books, that would put special, additional restrictions on development of that back portion, that steep portion of that property, because, because of its steepness, hillside regulations, and because of the slip-prone soil, so, so we have some coverage there.
Sure, okay, thank you. Thanks.
But that still doesn't address the question about the triangular, which seem to be separate parcels, right?
David, if you would, come up here for a minute, or both of you, come up for a minute. Yeah, because, so, here's the development piece, all right? And there's this, and then there's this.
Yes, we do not have a purchase option on these two triangles.
I see. So.
Stay away across the hillside.
So those, so those are little ones that somebody could put up?
Those are, those are separate.
A mini, mini house or something, or a tiny house or something.
Tiny house?
Yeah.
So the, if I'm, sure. So we had this discussion briefly the last time, and we all recognize, you know, that it would be a fool's errand to try and build anything up on that slope side, I mean, it just, slippy, it's, it's not conducive to anything like that. Again, without doing a lot split, and then thinking about differently zoning that hillside that is not part of this project, is there a way in which it can be, just be maintained as?
Open space.
Open space, I, I dare not say recreational space, because it's just a steep hill, but I mean, but not wanting to use the term nature preserve either, I mean, it's just going to remain hillside at the end of the day.
Yeah, that's, that's right. We're open to exploring different mechanisms to memorialize that.
What about conservancy designation? I don't know, I just, I mean, you can't. You make this suggestion.
You, well, I can't recall, Director Stone, maybe you recall what we called the area that was part of the, this recent annexation to the city on Cable Lane with the 35 acres, that there was a piece that was to be left as leave it alone space, or whatever, I don't recall. Anyway.
I don't know, sir, I, I guess philosophically, I, I look at Athens over the last 20 years in our efforts to, to put conservation easements in the surrounding terrain, and we just had a conversation at city council last week about how Athens is growing slower than the, than the, than the rest of the state, and how we're going to have to cut services if we don't get an income tax increase, because, and, and you need people to grow. Now, that said, there are certainly portions of the periphery of the city that are inappropriate for, for development, you know. This one might be one, that it is. I don't know that it's our role as a planning commission to say you, you have to do this, but certainly we can suggest to you, as you go forward to the city council, to ask for zoning, because you are going to get opposition from the neighbors, you just are. I mean, that's the way that it works when, when you ask for any change anywhere in the city, is that somebody's going to be opposed, and so maybe a way that you can allay concerns would be to say, our intent is to build here, we're willing to put a conservation easement on this back, on this back half, as a, as a mechanism that could counsel to, to rezone the way that you want it.
Certainly.
I mean, is, is it possible to zone half of it? I, I mean, I don't know if it means we have to survey everything, but the zone, the back half is just open space. That's a zone.
If they subdivided, I think, then we'd have to.
I would request that we zone the entire parcel as proposed, because that will allow us to have the density we need to put enough units on the, the developable section.
You mean like as of, if it's, if it's two different parcels, then you've got a lot coverage issue, is that the?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, we could do split zoning across the parcel line, not the only place in the city, I just think it's a good thing to get into.
Is, and, and back to the triangle, so he doesn't have a purchase option. Is there not a reason for us not to recommend the larger triangle to west, northwest, as B3?
B3?
R3, or, or, or B3, whichever?
Sir, do you know ownership? Is it owned by the, by the, by the Nine Pomeroy Road portion?
I, I, we can easily find out.
David, could you look?
Yeah, the, the one to the east is Florin Moore Properties LLC.
Okay.
And the other one is Kathy Pittman.
Yeah, so Kathy Pittman.
Kathy Pittman.
The, the one I would recommend, sir, the, the one to the west that's Florin Moore, is when we send our recommendation to council, that we recommend that in addition to this request made by the property owner for going to R3, that we recommend council change that one to B3.
That, that's fine with me. It seems logical then to have it's, you know, B3 and a R3 sandwich an R1.
Right, right. And I think, I would think Florin Moore wouldn't be opposed, because generally business land is more valuable than, than residential land.
Yes.
If I could here, we got, we had a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting this month, and they were looking at some of this area where they were doing, were granting use variances for residential on the first floor in some of the business zones along, along Pomeroy Road. I had a quick discussion with the board about how this was originally zoned when Pomeroy Road was one of the main thoroughfares into the city of Athens, and that was done, you know, that was probably in the 60s, in the early 60s, when that happened. It's no longer, I would no longer consider it a major thoroughfare, it wouldn't be like East, the East State Street or anything like that. And so what the board, what the Board of Zoning Appeals did was they asked for staff to review this whole Pomeroy Road area, the zoning in this area, and see if there's a need to maybe do a, a regional rezoning of that area, look at it, and that was their recommendation to, to, from, from that BZA variance approval.
Do they have a recommended zone?
They did not.
B1 would be appropriate?
I think so.
Because you can do first floor residential on a B1.
I think that would make the most sense, yes.
Pomeroy used to be 33.
Yeah.
Where's 33 is?
Can I, can I comment about that?
Sure. Wait, or no?
However the chair pleases.
I'm Rob Delitch, Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city. So we've had three separate requests for residential on the first floor in that zone, and they've all been granted by the board, that's over the last couple of years. So it does seem to make sense to look at this, to figure out what's going on, what, how the zoning could be updated, makes sense there. And this project, I think, should weigh into that, what that should look like. We need it to be connected into the infrastructure of the city there, which fortunately is not a big leap, but there are, is some work to do for that too, so keep that in mind as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob.
You know, what their timeline is versus the wider rezoning effort, and how they would not hold up their timeline.
The question, yeah, the question being discussed at the DIAS was just the timeline for, what is your timeline for this project?
Yeah, we, we plan to apply for funding in February, so we would need to have zoning in place prior to that, that month.
February. You have a name for this potential development that I'm not seeing?
Tentatively.
Pomeroy landing.
Tentatively Pomeroy landing.
How about Mechanicsburg?
I think that was further up here.
It was.
So how does, how does that impact the discussion we're having here now with the, with the R, the, the R1 piece between two?
Mr. Chair, what I would, would propose, and I, I can make a motion if that's, you know, what you would want to do, or I could share it, and then we can make a motion, but is that we, you know, vote to support the request for zoning, and additionally recommend that the portion just, or the, the parcel just to the west be changed to a B1, with a further recommendation to, to council that they look at rezoning, or that we look at rezoning of the entire stretch from Richland Avenue to Coventry on Pomeroy Road for appropriate zoning as a follow-on, as a, as a follow-on initiative, but we don't want to delay it because of the, his timing for funding.
And so, so part of the logic to that is that the R3 that we're looking at, the development on, on Zero Pomeroy, has housing on the first level, so by making the triangle of B1, that allows a similar kind of a development to happen there, as opposed to if it were a B3, it would not be permitted that way. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I would point out that the, that that parcel to the west is, is in ownership, there's like, there is actually five parcels of it in the same ownership there, so it goes along, along Pomeroy Road, so it's not just one parcel that you, one, you may want to look at, you may want to.
Is it all to the west, that ownership?
Same ownership, yeah.
This is all, Mr. Eric Lucas?
Yes.
And Floris.
Yes.
Well, would that be a better question for, well, let's just say for the sake of argument, we do what we, we just talked about doing, making that a B1, would that be a better argument to entertain later when they look at the whole corridor, the other parcels, or does it make sense for us to recommend everything to the west there on Pomeroy Road?
Yeah, I, that's a great question, Mr. Chair. I, you know, it's kind of a function of what council needs to pick up, you know, or what they would pick up in, in what iteration, right?
Yeah.
Because if there's speed necessary in order for their funding timeline to work, I wouldn't want to hold that up, but at the same time, you know, a reason they could vote it down would be because of that orphan R1 piece there. So like, it's hard to discern my, the, the will of the, the council members, we can certainly talk to them, but, but I mean, I think we need to, I think this is a case today, right? So.
Right, right, it is a case. Yes.
Could you, could we make a motion to approve the zoning change of the R1 to R3, and then just say that that's a suggestion?
Yes.
For the, for that little, other little triangle?
Right.
And then that leaves it to them either way?
I was going to suggest the same thing, just, this is a, kind of a friendly amendment to this, that, to consider this parcel.
Okay.
Now or in the future?
But just the triangle? Yes, yes, the western tri, okay. Okay, so makes sense to me as well, do we have a motion?
I, yeah, I, I move to recommend approval of the zoning request from R1 to R3 with the added suggestion of, to the, forward onto the council of also changing the zoning of the parcel immediately to the west, not under ownership of the applicant, to B1.
I'll totally consider.
Right.
I would second that.
Second, but, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is communications. Are there any communications? I guess I say no, because there's none listed there, I, so, so then we would move on to reports? Mr. Riggs?
Yes, sir, I have a few things. We did receive an additional zoning map change request that didn't come in a timely enough manner for, to be on the agenda for today, but they, that, I would expect that would be, would be coming up at the next meeting. It's similar to this type of a zoning request. I also wanted to note to the, to the committee that we're looking at structure, we have a company structure point that's doing some analysis of our, of our zoning code, and they're going to make suggestions for improving that, that zoning code, which I think is going to make the, make it better for this board, as well as for the city, to be able to have more coherent zoning in the city. And then finally, I had already mentioned this before, but at the BZA, there was a suggestion that staff, that we take a, that the city take a look at the whole Pomeroy Road corridor to see if there's need of rezoning that, to, to, to meet the, the more traffic and uses that are actually out there, to be more consistent with that. That's all I have.
Yes.
A question on the structure point, you said that they were going to come forward with zoning recommendations, is that pertinent to, or specific to Stimson Avenue, which is what they were involved with before, or broader?
They'll be looking at that, but in addition to the, to, we have an additional task for them.
Okay.
To look at our zoning code, and, and as you, as you all know, because you've been with the city for quite a while, there's, pieces have been added onto the zoning code, and they don't exactly fit just the way they should, so they're they don't exactly fit just the way they should, so they're going to be looking at that and making some recommendations on how to, and this is just, we're just now concentrating on Title 23, which is the zoning code, looking at the changes to that, although there may be some other places where we may want to look at maybe adding some of our overlay districts into the zoning code. We have two overlay districts currently, in my, in my head we do anyway, one would be the historical preservation overlay district in the uptown area, and then the wellhead protection areas around our water supply, so we have a couple of them, should we add those into the zoning code? Some of the questions that might come up. That's probably too much information.
No, no, that's good, that's good. Helpful.
Anything else?
That's it.
I would like to add to that, because this is something I've thought about for a long time, and it is in the comprehensive plan, is an area such as the, the west side, and in particular Central Avenue, all the way down to Second Avenue, you know, which back in the day had markets down there, there were neighborhood markets, Frank's bait shop still exists down there, kind of the city's sacred time capsule, but, you know, to rethink our zoning and use, uses throughout the city, to have something that would kind of go back to the days of yore, to where there's truly a walkable neighborhood, to even when it comes to things that you need, it's your market, that I'm not going to drive and use my fossil fuel vehicle to go all the way out to East State Street to get what I need, instead I can walk a block and a half, two blocks to get something at, I don't know, Frank's bait shop. And hopefully that's something that the structure point, American structure points will help us with as well. I think about that a lot, I think about how the city used to be back in the day with, when it had its own walkable neighborhood communities, much like West Washington, West State Street, Schaefer, Central Avenue, kind of their, their communities within a community. Just wanting to get that out there, because I think about it all the time, I think, how great that would be to see something helping us to decarbonize even further, because people aren't.
Yes.
So, when they're doing the work, I'm always asking, well, where does it work in other cities? So if they have other examples?
Yeah.
Models where it works?
That's one of the nice things about having a consultant-like structure point, they're, they're not just a local company, they have offices a lot of the, across the country, and they have, they see a lot of what other communities are doing, and so they have a better, better view than any of us of what might work best for, for the changes or suggested changes, so that's, that's a good thing.
Anything else? You, you don't have any, anything for Ms. Jennings, do you?
I don't.
I, I do have one note.
Oh, you do?
Just as an update to this commission, so the Welcome Home Ohio Grant that the city got tomorrow night, myself and Mayor are going to the Athens City School District Board meeting to present the, that particular program and our interest in, through that program, purchasing the front, you know, four, not four parcels, but, but the, front section of the former West Elementary School property.
The hillside.
Yeah, yeah, the front, the front portion of it, and from, from them, to then enter into that program and be part of the Welcome Home Ohio. We've identified several other locations, both city-owned and also privately-owned vacant parcels in the city that this can apply to, so if we're unsuccessful with the school board, we have a different, a different path, but we'd like to start, we'd like to start there, but we'll see how, we'll see how it goes tomorrow night.
Are there any citizens who would like to speak on something other than what was on the agenda today? Everybody shaking their hands. The last item on the agenda is the announcements or other business, any announcements or other business? I, I have one thing that I would like, figure out how to, to know this down the road, so Mr. DeLuca was here with a site plan proposal for 52, I believe it was 52, and sharing a house now. I am a part of a property ownership adjacent to it, do I need, the question would be, do I need to abstain from that, you know, or not? When it, when it does, assuming it will come back here.
Is it a Title 41 review or a rezoning?
Yeah, site, site.
Site plan review? Yeah, probably a, a laudatory question more than us, I, it doesn't seem like a conflict to me, but, but.
My, my only comment about it too is I just think that it's a very dense development on a narrow, challenging site, but I, you know, and so, you know, I'm, I'm trying to keep an open mind as I think about it, but I, I just wanted to make sure that, that it's the right thing for me to be a participant in those discussions.
Sir, when in doubt, there are five of us, so if you, if you want to.
Okay, okay, that's all I had. With that, I guess if there's no other announcements or other business, then I would say that our next meeting is December 4th, and so I would wish everybody a, an enjoyable Thanksgiving, and I would say we're adjourned.